Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with our COVID update. Amber will have some numbers and then we'll talk a little bit about town policy.
Okay, we're still holding at eighty again, so that's a couple of weeks in a row without a new COVID case on Shelter Island. And the number for Suffolk County in the last seven day rolling average is three point nine percent. Which I think last week I gave the Long Island average, which was three point eight percent. But I think Long Island has gone from three point eight percent down to three point four percent. So I think our Suffolk number dropped a little bit too on positives. So, holding steady or declining a little?
Okay, we had the East End Supervisor and Mayor's meeting last week and we took a poll. And it's kind of fifty fifty who's doing what. A few of the towns and villages are doing virtual only, a few are doing hybrid. And a few are doing, it's not fifty fifty then, and a few are doing in-house only. But a lot of them are going more to the hybrid and away from just the in-house only. What we've instituted here at Town Hall is, we have John Spinelli, our card officer, is going to be attending our work sessions and our town board meetings, checking for people that they have their vaccine cards. And if they don't, they'll have to attend by Zoom. So we're doing that. And we've also sent out a notice to all departments that, again, we installed Plexiglas in all the departments and that we installed that for a reason. So keep the public behind the Plexiglas. If for some reason they need to come into your office, you have to make sure that they're vaccinated. And if they're not and you want to entertain them in your office, you have to, they have to wear a mask. And if any town employees are not vaccinated, they have to wear a mask. So again, our numbers are good. We're trying to stay on top of things, but we're, want to make sure that we don't slip. Anybody else, anything else on COVID?
No.
Okay. And I spoke with Dr. Dolger today and everything's going well with the school. They had a couple of little blips at the very beginning, but everything's going fine right now. So everything's going well and everybody's being very careful. So that's it on our COVID update. Next on the list is our volunteer recognition celebration, which is this Saturday. And again, I just want to remind everybody, we're recognizing the volunteers, but it's for the entire island. We're, we hope that the whole island shows up, you know, for this celebration. And to acknowledge the, our volunteers and everyone else. It's going to be a nice affair. Dr. Dolger will be speaking. I'll speak a little bit. There's going to be food, there's going to be drink, there's going to be entertainment. It should be a real nice affair. And we're looking forward to it. We invited, we tried to invite everybody that was involved in any aspect of COVID. We have people from Southampton coming over and it should be a nice, nice day. Jim?
Yeah, just a couple of things. We met again last week, just to tighten up a few things. As you realize, this is being co-sponsored by the Lions Club and this town of Shelter Island. They asked for a donation from the town, not a donation, to pay our share, which was two thousand dollars. I talked about that with Amber, then I talked about Shelby. So we're getting vouchers from Susan, the total of two thousand dollars. I said, we don't make a donation, but have to pay through a voucher system, so she's taking care of that. The setup will start at eight AM sharp at Wade's Beach, even though the function doesn't start four, six and a half hours later. We want to get everything set up. From two thirty to four, we start at two thirty. We're going to have our first band, the violin and guitar. Chris and Andrew will be playing from two thirty to four. We have a short fifteen minute part at four o'clock for speeches. At four thirty, the Realm is going to start playing. It's a pretty popular band here on the East End. That should be pretty good. They'll finish up the last two hours from four thirty to six thirty. The food is all covered. We will start serving probably, you know, when the, when the people arrive at two thirty, we'll start with food. We have all kinds of donations and we'll make that public when we solidify the final groups of people that have donated. But the donations have been very, very generous and much appreciated. We'll be checking since alcohol is being served. Anyone in the twenty eighteen to thirty age group that, you obviously have to be twenty-one years of age or older, they'll be issued a wristlet, just to make sure you and I don't have to worry about a thing. So we won't be, they don't be asking for ID cards from us. We got Chris Carey and Jim Garrity on the bar. We have the cleanup, which will start promptly as soon as the event is over at six thirty. Don Amato is going to be our host. We're just asking people, if you bring one thing, beaches, beach chairs or blankets would be important. Especially if you're going to stay for an extended period of time. I would venture to say that chairs and blankets would be the only thing you really need to bring. And other than that, we're praying for a nice day. We have a huge tent set up. And should be a great affair. And as Supervisor said, it's Lions Club and the town thanking all of our first responders and the nurses and Stony Brook, school personnel, town personnel that really helped out during this pandemic. Just to say thank you. And all those invites went out. I don't think we went over that list three, four times checking on it. I don't think we missed anybody. But as Supervisor mentioned, it is open to the public. We're expecting about three to three hundred and fifty people. Parking will be a little bit of an issue. People that live in the area, if you can walk, that would be greatly appreciated. We will have room for about ninety to a hundred cars in the parking lot. All our volunteers will park outside the parking lot up in local neighborhoods. And we did pass the noise ordinance and the parking restrictions on the west side and south side of South Midway. So we can park along the shoulder of the road there. Just want to remind everybody, there will be no parking on the east side of the road or on the north side of South Midway where it bends around, does that right angle, right at the opening to Wade's Beach. We only will have parking on one side of the road. There is more of a shoulder on those two sides than there are on the east side and the north sides of the road. So we want to keep that open for the travel. But that's about it.
Okay. Good. Looking forward to it. Next on the list, we have, we have, we have a business permit application. Probably not the best way to do it, but we figured we didn't have a venue to do it any other way. Bert Waif with Eel Town Oysters is in the aquaculture business. He would like to make a presentation to us to expand his business to use, to use a float on a mooring, because there's really no place else to do it. He has plans that he rents off, you know, on the outside waters to grow his oysters, but he needs a place to do some, some of his work on the inside waters. So part of the comprehensive plan when we were going, you know, forward, was that we wanted to acknowledge Bayman in aquaculture and see how we can work with him. So Bert, you want to come up and tell us what your thoughts are and what we'd like to, ready to get going?
Okay, thank you. So, very dryly, the permit states that I want to put an eight by twenty float on a mooring at Daniel Lord Road, on a mooring that's already existed and permitted, and then be able to have the boat attached to the float. So in essence, the float in one way becomes the mooring buoy or becomes part of the mooring structure. And the boat, you know, complements that and ties up to that. So that's, that's the request to put the-
So Bert, is it, is it a workstation or what, what do you, what is it going to be?
All right. So why I came to asking you for permission to do this was that as I've been developing the oyster business or, you know, my, my oyster farm, I've tried out different equipment. I've had, you know, and as you know, I've been in the mooring business. So I started the business using my workboat that I use for my mooring business. So I did that for a year. And I saw the limitations that was involved with it in terms of how it worked in the, but also, it's also very useful because I have a lot of, I use floating gear and it needs a lot of ground tackle. So I use my mooring rig to set the ground tackle. And then last winter, I had a oyster barge built specifically for floating gear. And so I've just started using that to tend to the farm and that's working out really well. So I had this old float last year from, I was using it for different things. So I rebuilt it and I put it at Daniel Lord Road. And over the winter, I had it there and maybe in the fall as well. And I used it occasionally to, when I was just having my old equipment, I brought seed back there and I tumbled on it and then I brought it back to the farm. Well, it worked for that, but it was very inefficient. So now I have my tumbler on my new workboat. So I don't need it for that. But I found that the float was very, was helpful when I had to transfer equipment and gear from the shore to the oyster boat. So I don't have a slip and in the, well, that would be the west side of the island. I have one at Congdon Creek, but that's too far to keep running around every day. So I use a pulley line at Daniel Lord Road. So Daniel Lord Road has a history of commercial use going back generations on this island. There are people who scalloped out of there and have launched their boats for fishing and seine netting, et cetera. So I'm not the first one to use it commercially. So I have a pulley line there with a boat that I built, a little, a little garvey. And, and that works really well. And then I, I put whatever I need in my bags or I use other things and I take it out to the, to where the float is, where my mooring is. And then I move from the float to, to the boat. And I find that where I could just have the boat and move from the skiff to the boat, I find it safer for me when I'm moving large cages or if I have to reorganize and leave some bags back, depending on what the day is or when I'm coming back. I might move some totes to the float or, or things. So I find it very helpful. And also sometimes I need it where if I have to remove my tumbler for a while, I can put it on the, on the float so that my, my workboat now, my, you know, the oyster boat is open, I have an open deck. And then I can do, I can move cages and stuff like that. So, and so I could use partially, say, the town dock that's there, if I could, but I don't want to, I don't want to take advantage of that and use it more than you're really supposed to. So, so I think it, it helps, it helps in that way that I don't put pressure on that, on that facility. So that's, that's how I've been using it. It's, as far as, I mean, I talked to Bo about it and he said that you're really not increasing the swing room. You are increasing, say, the beam of it. And he recognized the fact that I'm in the business of moorings and that I know how to secure something and I can tend to my own moorings sufficiently. So he wasn't worried about me not having the proper tackle to, to maintain this. So according to Bo, it was one thing or the other. He said, you could either have the float on it or you could have your boat on it. And I said, okay. So when he, when he told me that, I moved my boat to, you know, a friend's, you know, dock in the, in the area. And I have it there now. So right now, the float's just there. So I'm in compliance. And what I'm doing now is I'm going from my skiff and to the boat, bringing it, and then still using the float occasionally to move things around, but I'm not leaving anything on there. So I don't know-
So the float would stay there all year?
What will stay there all year?
Float would stay all year.
The float will stay there all year. And that's the other thing. As far as usage in, say, from like November to, you know, till back to the spring, I'm the only one out there in that area. You know, if you looked at the, the Google map that's taken in the, in the wintertime, you'll see that I got the only, boat on a pulley line, the only boat in the area. I'm the only one using it in that-
And Bert, is that the preferred area or is that because you had a mooring there that's why you?
I think it's, it's, it's because I have a mooring there and because I have access from the shoreline there, I have the pulling line. You know, if the town wanted to commercialize, you know, Dickerson, or what is that, Dawn Lane at, at the creek, you know, for commercial usage?
Grace's Lane.
Oh, Grace's Lane, right. Grace's Lane, yeah. Graces down at Dickerson Creek. Yeah, that would be, you know, that would be a good place.
Didn't we say one time you were going to like do your loading and unloading at Grace's Lane?
Well, I do, I still use it. I actually was there today. And I took a piece of equipment off my boat. The, I don't need the canopy anymore. So I took the framework for that off there. And I, I was able to fit between the police boat and that floating dock. So, you know, even with that tree right there, I was able to use it. So that's, that's a very helpful spot for people to load and unload. And occasionally I'll, you know, move things, I'll preposition things there. And if I'm running back and forth to my oyster grounds, I might, you know, use that instead of Daniel Lord Road. That can save a half hour.
Yeah. Just two comments. Number one, Christina, is it possible to pull up Daniel Lloyd Road and be able to see exactly where this is located, just so we can, we can look at it in relationship to the other moorings? And the other thing was, Jerry, the first year that we opened up that new Dickerson Creek, we, the police department member, Peter and Butch and the whole, if you want anybody else down there.
You're right.
Temporarily, yes. Yeah, you want to come in, you want to unload something, but they didn't want the floating dock there, not for this year. It's not to say that we couldn't look at that down the road.
But that was, that was more permanent. This burden, you can use it as a work spot, in and out, you know, just to drop off and pick up.
Right. Yeah, no, I think it's, you know, it's good for me. I think it's good for anybody else that's, you know, doing commercial work in that area or, you know.
Bert, so you have the float on the mooring now?
Right.
And you have your oyster boat?
Right.
With the tumbler that's at a friend's dock?
Yes.
And then you just have your workboat on a pulley line at Daniel-
Well, I have my, yeah, my skiff.
Yeah.
Right, right. And then my workboat is down in West Neck Harbor right now and I'm mooring there.
So potentially, how many pieces could you have tied up on the board?
I would have-
At a given point in time?
Well, I mean, okay, I'm basically two, right? Overnight, I would have two. I would have my oyster workboat attached to the float. And then in the morning, I would come out or daylight hours, I would come out with my skiff. And temporarily, I would have, you know, the skiff on one side of the floating dock. And then the oyster boat on the other side. And as I transfer, right, then I would take the oyster boat. I'd go out to the oyster grounds and then my skiff is staying on the floating dock. And then when I return, I reverse the process.
Where's your oyster grounds?
Uh, Noyack Bay by Jessup Snack.
Okay, right. Where do you plan on unloading? Coming to shore?
Right. I land, right, I land right there at Daniel Lord Road. I use the, either the dock or I use my skiff to, at my pulley line. And I've been doing that successfully. I mean, I-
How long does it take you to offload roughly? I'm just thinking-
It's just, it's-
Taking up the dock.
Right. I think it's, you know, it's no more, you know, depending on how many oysters I have, it's, it's just a few minutes. Because what I do is, you know, it's, it's, I come in, I even, I usually keep the engine running, whatever. I, it's, you know, the oysters are there, depending on if I'm with somebody or by myself, how, how long it takes me to unload. Because if it's, you know, if I have twenty bags of oysters, I transfer them first to, you know, put the totes on, then empty the bags, put them on, you know, and then pull them down the dock to where my truck is and then move my, my boat back to the, to the mooring and then come in and then load up and go. Yeah. So I, yeah. So it's, you know, I don't, the transfer time is, it's pretty quick.
And Bert, would you be doing this approximately once a week, twice a month, or once a-
Uh, you know, I mean, I'm, you know, hopefully, there probably is a daily component to it.
Oh, all right. Can you hear now? Is that all right?
Yeah, there's a daily component to it, Jim. You know, I'm out, depending, you know, depending on the wind and the, you know, wind and the weather that I'm, you know, as far as, I mean, I don't harvest, I might harvest like once, twice a week. But, you know, I'm going out to the oyster grounds more than that, usually.
Thank you.
It has, has been. So.
It's not like you're opening oysters or anything and dropping-
I, I'm not, not doing any retail business there.
Just point to the spot right back.
I'm sorry, just, it's just, it's just helpful.
So. All right. So I think that's an older version of the map.
Okay.
The, but-
So thirty-five sixty-five, that's you.
Thirty-five, I think it's thirty-five sixty-five?
Yeah, that's you.
Right. But it's, okay. That doesn't seem to be the, where it is in reality.
Yeah.
This is where it is in reality. Somewhere up here. And I don't know, these moorings, I think these are, these are Danny Calibos or one of them is. And that's over here. I think one of them might be Walter Richards. He's here. And then there's another caliber mooring over here. And then you issued a new one to like Nine Manantik over here. And then there's Chips is over here.
So just point to the spot where the, where the float would be and you're-
Float would be right, right here. This-
Right now, yeah.
No, I think actually the location on there is good because if I'm looking at what you gave us.
Right.
Your, yours is in between-
Yeah, between the two docks, I think, Bert.
So if, if Christina scrolls down.
Scroll out a little bit.
Yeah, then you'll see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's right.
All right. So then there's, that's Chips.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that looks like the one on, you marked up. So then that would be you.
So then I, then I guess that one's Walter.
Okay. So you're more like at that W thirty-five, thirty-five?
Thirty-five sixty-five.
Thirty, right, two nine zero is the first person.
The, the tumbler, Bert, what do you, have a generator to power that?
No, it's hydraulic. And so I got a hydraulic power pack on the boat. Right. And I'm not doing any tumbling there at Daniel Lord Road. I do all of that out in the, my oyster grounds. The only, you know, so, you know, that's, yeah, I don't do any, you know, I basically, now the way I have it organized, I do my sorting, tumbling and counting out in the oyster grounds. I bring back and I just land at Daniel Lord Road. I don't, I'm not bringing them back.
Sorry if I missed this somewhere.
Right.
What was the reason for the float other than to catch the boat?
It's, it's, it helps, it's, it's kind of, it's safer for me to transfer different things from my skiff back to the, to the oyster boat. And then, and then there's often times that I have equipment like a cage or that I need to either bring back from the oyster grounds and leave it on the float for a while or, you know, to, to change the equipment. Or if I'm storing bags, if I have some equipment on the oyster boat that I don't need at the moment, instead of, you know, taking it to shore or unloading it, I can leave it there. And then also occasionally, I will put my tumbler on the float so that my, my deck is clear and I can do other activities that I need to do.
I was out of curiosity on the navigational channel, is it to the west of the U that, that they?
Yeah, it goes-
Yeah.
It goes up and through the west side.
And so like I said, you know, as Bo said, there was no increase in swing. It's just a question of the amount of beam, you know, I'm just eight foot wider than, you know, in that. So not interfering with any of the other moorings. And, you know, I think, so, you know, there, you know, there isn't another way to address it in the code. I don't, you know, I mean, you don't have, you know, how do you get permission to put two things on a mooring? You don't allow it. So I thought, you know, I'm not, you know, I would like to see, you know, in the future, you can address, you know, aquaculture in your code. You can possibly make some provision so people who are in the, you know, who do have a lease somewhere in the pecanics are able to do, able to have certain equipment or functionality that, that makes it, you know, easier for them.
So Bert, in this specific area, you have the steak mooring and pulley and that one mooring or you have other moorings?
Right. I have one mooring up in Daniel Lord Road. I have two holding moorings down in West Neck Harbor. What's that? The harbor. Right. And I use, I use them all. You know, if, you know, when you have a landscape business, you might have, you know, six different trucks. You know, you might have your pickup truck, you might have your, your chipper, you got your trailer. When you're in the mooring business and the aquaculture business, you have boats, you know, so, you know, I've got boats. I got equipment and you need, you know, without owning a marina, which, you know, would be, it doesn't even exist now to get, get such a thing. This is the way to do it. You know, you have to have moorings. And so when you hire somebody, you know, there's a chance that, you know, they might have their own boat to, to facilitate the, the oyster farm. And I have that now. Tempting to hire somebody. And so if, you know, it's helpful for them to sometimes come out with one of my other boats, you know, to bring back things back and forth. So I'll need, you know, I need those moorings that I have and possibly even more, you know.
I, I think this is something, you know, we need to address moving forward because, you know, it is a, a new type of business on the island.
Yeah, wrote that down.
And, uh,
Something to think about.
But I, I think we need to, you know, I, I, again, I had mentioned to Bert, I, I'd like to hear from the Bayman and obviously the WMAC because it might, it's not just going to be you. There might be, you know, maybe the Clark, you know, Kenny Clark and his sons want to get involved or the Cottulas or John Cottula or, you know, so let's, let's try to, if we're going to do this, let's do it right. But I, I support the concept, but let's just make sure we, let's do it once and do it right.
Well, I'm not really following you here. Are you?
I think the charge though, Bert.
I'm sorry?
The charge is last year, we worked on docks at the WMAC. This year, we're going to focus with the town attorney on, on moorings. So what you said before about ten minutes ago, you said, and I wrote it down, you need to address the aquaculture in the, in the new town code. So that's something that we need to focus on. It's a real life business that's growing in popularity and, and it's something that we should consider as we start to attack the mooring.
Oh, absolutely. I think you, I think you do. I mean, you can, you can also look at the whole, if you want to talk about moorings. I, I didn't want to go there, you know, I didn't, I mean, I hope, I hope, is there a taser anywhere? You can tase me. I don't want to get involved with, I don't want to go into moorings, you know. I really, I really want to stay focused. Yeah, please. Thanks so much. Look. So, but please, so are you, so are you saying?
My suggestion to you.
Okay. So are you saying to me that you can't address, are you, can we address this permit right now without, I mean, and then use?
Here's my suggestion.
Okay.
That your float is there. Keep it there. Use it now. Let's, let's make, let's figure out how to either make it work the way it is, change it so it works the way we want it or let's figure out how to best use it. It's there now. Use it the way it is. And let's figure out how we're going to go forward.
I was, Supervisor, as long as it complies with code.
Right.
Let's not ask them to do something that doesn't comply with the current code.
Right.
Well, the only thing that doesn't apply with the code is two boats on a mooring. So, and he says right now, he took the boat off, off, off of it. But he can work off it, just can't keep it on there permanently.
Right. So Bert, there's one, one- So Bert, there's one, one item there, not three?
Cause right now Bert said he took, he took the boat off the mooring.
Right. I, I have the boat off the mooring now. I don't have, uh, you know, my friend was very gracious and he's allowing me for a few days reprieve to be at his dock, but he's not giving me, you know, the whole season or the year, you know, for you to come up with a, uh, a solution. I thought I had a solution with you granting me this, you know, permit of commercial use. Like, so if you give me this permit, you know, Jim, if it were to be, if the town gave me this permit to have, you know, for this commercial use, would that satisfy you that I could have two items on that float?
Right. So, so Bert, I would want to do two things. One, we look at the code and two, get with the Bay Constables. So I, I don't see anything that's presented. So none of that's, but I haven't seen anything that you're presenting, although I've seen it on the screen today. So let me get a copy of that. Let me review with the Bay Constables and we'll get back to the board, um, by next week.
Right. So, so I mean, the, the town, I mean, the town, okay.
Bob, can we, from, okay that to use the mooring with the boat on it until we make a decision on what we're doing?
The easiest thing here would be to give them a temporary variance for.
Right. I mean, I feel comfortable with that. Just, I don't want to issue a permit till we know what we're doing. And I don't want to say, no, you can't do anything because he has a business.
So you, you're looking to tie up three pieces on the.
Two, basically two. Uh, three is very.
Time, but there'll be three.
There'll be three, right, for, while I transfer, maybe for, you know, 20 minutes or an hour, depend, but I would be there present with it. There are people, I mean, now, I think, you know, um, it's a different story if you have two, if you have two boats and one person is on one of those boats and you're tied to a mooring. I don't think that, that doesn't really affect in the, in the code. Then you're in operate, you're in operation mode of the boat. You're not on, you're not really technically at anchor. Okay? So, so I would only have three there while I was on the, present on the, on the float or on the, on the mooring. If I wasn't there, I'd only have two. I'd only have the boat and the float.
The simplest way to deal with this is you have, it's going to need to be a code change one way.
Bob, you just got to speak up, please.
The simplest way to deal with this, and it's because it would need to be a code change one way or the other, is simply add a section for the moment, at least in the, uh, mooring code that says that the, the town board may on implication waive any provision of this, uh, section.
Can we just do a, literally it's a one. Short-term variance or an exception?
Yeah, that's.
Till we decide what we're doing?
That's what I would do. I, I could do, do that in the interim.
Yeah.
But that's the, you know, the code change, it would pretty much, it would give you a lot of flexibility as far as, uh, you know, sort of these special circumstances where, that you're not going to ever be able to see all of them coming.
So what do we do?
Yeah, just do a resol, uh, we could do a resolution Friday, give them a temporary variance. If you want to set a hearing on the law, we can do that as well.
But we're not ready to set a hearing. We need to have a lot of discussion.
So I would just do a temporary variance then so we can, you know, allowing him to keep, you know, to keep one boat plus the, or to just basically determine that a, uh, at least for this case, you're determining that a float is not a vessel and so it won't, doesn't count for the number or do any number of persons.
Bob, I don't know what you're saying.
Basically, you could determine that for the purposes of this mooring, that we're not counting the float as a vessel for the purposes of the mooring. Um, so that he could have an additional boat on there.
So the board can do a variance from the code?
Yeah, the board can always do a variance from the code.
Okay.
They're the ones that make the code.
So, so it would be, it would be a temporary relief so Bert, Bert can continue his operation till we decide what we're doing. Right?
Yeah, since that's what it is.
Okay.
Um, right. I mean, if it's timely, that'd be great. I mean, I'm offering to pay, you know, the, the fee in the, um, you know, the special, uh, commercial thing. I mean, um, I know, I just want to make sure, I just want to, you know, be clear that I understand that there's a difference between a permit and a lease, you know, that I'm leased to my oyster farm and, and there's, you know, great protections that I'm given from the county with my lease. I understand a permit is at your discretion and can be, uh, removed, revoked, um, at, you know, at your direction. So, um, I, if I do get a permit, you know, I will adhere to, you know, what you say about the permit, knowing that it's, you know, the fragility, fragility of it. Okay?
Yeah. And, and again, Bert, we, you know, we, we realize that this is a new, uh, you know, opportunity for business on the island and we're trying to work with everybody. So.
Right.
We just want to make sure we do it right.
Okay. Right. Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be in compliance and, and, uh, you know, so, um, so is that what you, so you?
Of all the oyster growers on the island, you're really the only one that grows them on the island.
Well, I'm the only one that lands them on the island. Right? I mean, the, um, you know, the other oyster, you know, people who retail here, uh, you know, Pico, his, his facility is out in New Suffolk where he lands his and, and the gentleman who, you know, over at your place, they, um, they have a facility over in Salpo that, uh, the mechanic, uh, Pecanic Land Trust has a place at Shellfisher Road. And they have, they're in an inlet, very protected. They got a dock there and it's a pretty nice facility. Um, so, yeah, so I'm the only one, you know, technically who has a shipper D permit that lands product on the island from, from the bay.
Okay. So the next step is we're going to set up a meeting with the Bayman and the WMAC.
Um.
We're going to wait till the winter to that or?
No, 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 no. I, I think Jim should meet with the, uh, as long as the Bay Constables are okay with in terms of, uh, the navigation and everything else. I think that's a good first step. And then, um, you know, I, I think we grant this on a temporary basis and see how it goes and, uh, monitor it. And I think it has to be addressed as we move forward with the changing of the town code. But I think as you both mentioned, that it's something that needs to be addressed on a broader scale, not just with you, Bert, but across the board with all, all our commercial shell fishermen and, uh, you know, it's an enterprise that has a long history here on Shelter Island and obviously the, you know, uh, things have changed, but, you know, whatever we can do to, uh, support it, we need to examine that, you know, to try to be supportive of this, of this industry because it obviously, you know, it's, it's a good industry. And it helps to protect the water, cleanse the water and do a variety of things and provide good food source for people and business for people and livelihood and all those reasons, so.
Okay. Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bert.
All right.
Thanks, Bert.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the list, let's go back to our transfer of development rights. Bob, I'm getting Nancy to get this done. Where are we?
Yeah, I'm trying to set up a meeting with Suffolk County Health and our, uh, with the planning board attorney, uh, who's, uh, who's the person who wrote this for the, I believe, Seg Harbor Village, um, and has already been through the process once with the, uh, health department. So as soon as I can get that pulled together, I'll, uh, move forward. We're just going to make sure that whatever we do is, uh, acceptable for the health department.
All right. Let's make that a priority because I really like to try to get, just, just to get that in place so we can.
What, what do you guess? A minute timeline, Bob?
It's, it's, it's two, two and a half weeks, depending on the health department's schedule. They're willing to be with us.
Okay. Okay. Then next on the list is the town code revisions. Uh, we talked about, you know, starting our revisions. We're, a lot of it has to do with definitions. Uh, we've had some back and forth mail going on about, uh, the definition of resident. Bob, you want to walk us through where we are with this one?
Yeah, my, my, my understanding from the last meeting of the board is that the primary concern was that we wanted to, uh, ensure that any property owner was considered a resident, notwithstanding whether they were a person or corporation or what have you. Um, that was sort of the basis of this. Um, the other basis of this is that the, the general definition should be very relatively broad. Um, in that, what, who we defined as a resident and that we always had the ability to further restrict that within any section if we needed to do so. So, you know, that was sort of the basis for what we got. Um, in light of some of the comments, um, we had, there were comments regarding, um, concerns to whether it's an LLC or a corporation, who exactly would be considered the primary person there and the contact.
Bob, can you speak up a little?
So I did add a section with deals with that particular, um, issue at the end that, uh, I would make probably not part of definitions, but probably part of the code.
I kind of see, you know, and then they talk about, uh, current, current definition of resident, any owner of real property within the town of Shelter Island or any person who resides in the town of Shelter Island pursuant to a six-month or longer rental agreement. Now, I think that's something that is almost impossible to enforce that six-month, how do you know they have four months, seven months? Come on, I, I, I just don't think that's realistic. Uh, the immediate family, spouse or children of residents as defined above shall also be deemed to be residents. So I think, you know, when you look at this definition, there are five or six major issues on the thing. Uh, I would love to be able to address each one of those issues and then develop a definition based on those issues. So, uh, who's covered? Is there, is there a time requirement that you have to be on Shelter Island?
Well, I was told last year, you want a one-year lease.
Yeah.
If it's written, if it's a written lease, you should have, you know, you can always look at the lease. It'll tell you for how long it is.
This is on December twenty-fourth. The twenty-fourth is the most recent one, correct?
Yeah, you want me to read you what I, I can read it here. Um, any natural person or legal entity that owns property situated in the town of Shelter Island or leases such property for a term of at least one year. You can certainly change that to whatever timeframe you want. Uh, additionally, all members of the immediate family of any person who owns or leases such property, either in his or her own name or the name of an entity in which such person is the majority shareholder, managing partner, managing member, managing or managing director, shall be considered resident so long as such immediate family members, uh, reside at the Shelter Island address of the principal owner. Uh, it then goes into what the immediate family is, is defined as a spouse, partner, children, including natural or foster children, Amber ended, uh, adopted children, um, parents, siblings, grandparents and grandchildren. The third issue is who is considered a person, um, which we have then an individual corporation, limited li, an individual corporation, limited liability partnership, partnership, limited partnership, business trust, estate trust, association, or any other legal or commercial entity of any kind or description. Um, so I think that kind of breaks it down the way Jim was talking about, just sections regarding the various issues.
So this would be the, the definition for everything.
Correct.
And then if there's.
If, for example, you want moorings to be, um, you know, residents who have, you know, been here at least three years or something. You can always add that as a additional requirement in that section.
Under that check, in that section.
Or, you know, any additional requirements you want to add.
Not that we're just talking about the.
Yeah.
One of the, originally the way you'd written it, you'd said, um, for immediate family, children under the age of 22 residing with the family. And I didn't think that we should have an age limit on that. And I was thinking in terms of, I just had one daughter during COVID live with me for a year and she was 24. So she was a resident here, but she wouldn't be considered under this definition. I also think about some other people who I know who have aging parents and have come, you know, come to live with them to help, you know, be caregivers, their children, the house is in the parent's name, but they're clearly residents living with their parents. There's, you know?
Again, I think that's a fair point. And it's again, it's one of those things that if you decide at some point you want to be more restrictive in this particular section, you can at least add that there.
And then I didn't think that the person section was needed to define a person because up above under resident, you say any natural person or legal entity. And so I feel like it's just duplicative.
Yeah. So, so Bob, in terms of, we all received it from, uh, Phil Garrity. Phil Garrity is a member of the WMAC. And, uh, he obviously is an attorney as well. And he was looking at, um, a number of factors. Uh, first one being the definition of resident. And he put this, all these comments in red. Do you feel you've adequately addressed each and every one of these concerns or no?
Um, I believe so. I think, you know, I wrote a response to.
I think Bob's responses are in there.
Oh, your Bob's responses are in red. Okay. Okay.
And then I think we have some counter responses in blue.
Okay. All right.
Response, response.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yeah, that's.
The other thing is, I, I think Bill, a lot of his responses may have been very specific to, to moorings issues. And, um, one of the ideas with this was to make this something that's broader than just that, that covers all of the various sections. Again, we can make, if, uh, if the WMAC or somebody wants, you know, make a recommendation that we should be tighter on restrictions with respect to moorings, that's always something we do within that specific section.
Specifically, Bob, how, how does this, um, change in definitions address itself to the LLCs for moorings? How does this help define for the committee?
Well, I think, I think the final section, right, where I was talking about at the end, were, um, addresses their, their primary concern, which was identifying an individual, um,
Yeah.
on behalf of that LLC.
Yeah.
To be a representative of the town. And what I wrote, and I'll read this again, is, um, in, in any matter where a legal entity that is not a natural person seeks to conduct business with the town of Shelter Island and claims residency status, such business must be conducted by the majority shareholder, managing partner, managing member or managing director of the legal entity or a representative of the, of the corporation legally empowered by a power of attorney to act on its behalf. If the legal rep, representative is utilized and such person leaves the service of the entity, a new representative must be appointed within seven days or the entity shall lose any rights or privileges, um, of residency granted by the town. So, so that pretty much takes care of, you know, determining who, you know, the, would be the representative of the corporation, you know, to who we would deal with in anything yard of town business.
I think that's good for general, for a general overview. But I know when we start to get into, you know, how many moorings an individual can have. I feel like if you have, you know, if one person owns 10 LLCs, but then appointed a different representative for each one, and that each one is allowed to get three moorings.
Well, the rest, the moorings would be, and you know, you clarify this in the moorings section. As opposed to the, this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think, you know, we certainly need to go through mooring, as Jim was saying earlier, go through that and deal with these things. Um, but, um, the owner of the mooring is, is, is the corporation. The representative is just the person dealing with us.
Mm-hmm.
So then they would not be entitled to a mooring on their own.
Right.
It's the, it's only because they're. Corporation.
I, I think it just, it requires some more.
And I think, yeah, I think for the, for purposes of the mooring, that certainly would be, I think you'd want to consider the moorings law.
Mm-hmm.
We haven't quite gotten to that point yet.
So outside of the, uh, mooring area, how does this, these new definitions, what areas of?
I think Amber actually pulled the list.
I have list. Town, and I was going to say, I think before we try and institute this, we need to go through these sections. It's, it impacts town employment, parking permits, shellfish, waterways, moorings, docks, beaches, peddling and soliciting, um, our committees, boats and community housing. So we have to go to all of those sections. So if you guys want to copy this, all, all the different code sections.
Yeah.
I wrote down. So I think we need to look at this and then go to each one, see how it impacts what's there, what's actually going to need to be edited.
Initially, which is sort of what this was derived from, try to be general enough to deal with all of those.
Uh, I understand that we have to simplify the definition of resident. I, I still can't wrap my head around, okay. Jim, Amber and myself own three waterfront properties. Each entitled to three moorings. Albert buys all three of our moorings under, all three of our homes under three separate LLCs. Why isn't he entitled to the three moorings from each of our properties? But that's not what we're saying.
Well, that's not how the, I guess the current code is written, so we have to consider.
This, it would be what we're saying, because he'd have, each of those LLCs would be a resident in of itself. Albert can be. The representative for three different companies.
Right.
LLCs are the owners of.
Once we've been dealing with with Daniel Lloyd and. Yeah, man. He made it very clear that I was, he didn't want the nine, he wanted three, one per. You know, that was, that was it. That was his request. So he was going to complicate. The issue as far as that's him, that's not everybody.
But they're entitled to.
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
But they are depending on where they're located because.
Well, yeah, they're not repairing, but they're.
Because they weren't repairing. But if this was three waterfront properties, it would be three repairing and six, six other.
And that again is something I think needs to be addressed. It's more of a. A moorings law question than a definition question.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, how many more are you entitled to?
Generally, three is as far as any.
No, I'm saying that should be the question.
Yeah, well, yeah, right.
When is enough enough?
Now, Amber, do you feel, do you feel with the, the, it looks like ten or so that you read off? Maybe eleven, ten?
Eleven, very good.
The eleven that you just ran off. Do we go back and look at this as the liaisons to those committees? Or do we bring it back to the committees for the committees to look at? How do you want to handle that?
Well, the ones that pertain to committees were more just for membership on committees. So it's just a matter of double checking and making sure that, you know, like, we can just look at it and say, do we have a committee person on? You know, that wouldn't qualify as a resident under this. And therefore, are we being too restrictive in some fashion? Or should that person not be on the committee if they don't truly qualify under this definition?
As a general rule, I think other than, there are a couple of boards where they're required. As a general rule, most committees, we're now allowed, you don't even need to be a resident to be on.
Right, although CPFAC, Community Housing Board, Licensing Review Board, those four specifically.
Boards as opposed to.
Well, I think with COVID and the Zoom. It's changed the ground rules dramatically because nobody ever really much thought about prior to COVID nineteen of zooming in on a meeting too much. And now, now it's the rule of thumb. So I'm thinking of guy, I won't mention his name, but he just got back from Italy and he goes to Florida. And he's a key member of several committees and he's a valuable resource. To say that he lives here six months is not correct. You know, because he's gone for a couple of months in the summer and he's gone for four or five months during the winter, well, winter and spring. So he probably would not live here for that six month requirement. Yet I think if we are allowing, you know, as we move forward, committees to use a hybrid method. To keep well qualified people and for the convenience of attending meetings. You know, when people have busy work schedules, I think, you know, we have to think about that.
The other thing to remember on the residency definition is that this is not a dramatic change. Most of the definitions we have are already some version of this. The, the primary point here is that there were subtle differences. We're trying to get rid of those, make everything consistent.
Okay. Anything else on this?
What are our next steps?
What's my next question?
Well, it depends how much of an investigation you're doing. I pretty much. I'm fairly comfortable with this. If you guys want to discuss it further, you can certainly do that.
I think we should review your list.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say.
List has to go out. We have to look at that list and then make recommendations, share it out.
We'll put it up for next week.
Yes.
The other town code revision. I'll bring up that we don't have to talk about it today, but we will talk about it is the B one zone. I think it's time to have a very serious discussion about dropping the B one zone and making it into the V zone. B one zone, for the people that don't know, is this immediate area right here around Town Hall. It was put in, I'll read what it, what it, the purpose was. The restricted business zone was established to maintain the historic park-like government center appearance of the town center. Commercial enterprises are restricted to the types of uses that would. That would have the least impact on the appearance, traffic patterns, character, and parking facilities of the existing neighborhood. Special permits are required for all buildings and uses except governmental buildings and uses in the district. To ensure that the special criteria established for this zone are considered in the initial planning process. Whether it be for new buildings and or uses for the renovation or replacement of existing buildings or uses. Again, I think this was well intentioned when it was put in place that the center of town would be. Almost like a campus type setting for a government use, but it, it's, it's not practical. I don't think it's practical anymore. I mean, just to give you an example, if somebody were to buy Fede's today, they couldn't open it. Because it's pre-existing non-conforming and it lost its use. So that's just one example, that, or they'd have to go for special exceptions and I, I think, you know, I think B one is seen in its day. I think it's time we, you know, seriously consider putting it back to regular business zone.
The one, the one thing that strikes me, you know, you call it whatever you want, is the maintaining something. Unique about this area, the school, Town Hall, right down to the center firehouse, this immediate area right here. I'm just thinking about other, and I won't mention them, other areas, one fourteen, where we've got things there that. Suppose somebody came in and bought up Fede's and that whole spot around the post office and put in a, you know, a truck yard. You know, that kind of thing, I bet. Would it be in keeping with the buildings that were built in the nineteen thirties, like Justice Hall, Police Headquarters? And have that kind of unique kind of look to it. So I don't have any problem with that, but I, I just think we'd have to be, we'd have to be very careful about. What we allowed in this little, small downtown area because it's something that's different and unique about this portion of town.
I think we have site plan review.
Yeah, yeah.
Protect, you know, what it looks like.
Yeah.
How it's done. With, with that.
Yeah, I, I didn't want to signal anybody, but I just, what I, what I just didn't want to see happen is somebody buy up.
Right.
Two acres there, right?
Right.
Opposites of historic buildings and then.
Hey, let's review it. I'm like looking at it again since I haven't looked at it in a couple of years. What the code section says. Just trying to think of unintended consequences.
Right.
By loosening up things.
I went through the, that chapter and the only real major, there were a couple of small setback differences. But really, the only major difference was the, the allowable uses.
Area. Right.
And a few. Aesthetic issues.
Right. Okay, so that's something for us to talk about. I just wanted to get it out there that, yeah, it's something we need to address.
And, and my other comment is, Jar. The composition of this board right here. I don't, I would never see something, those kind of abuses for happening. But once you remove something and you get a lot of people in here that think totally different, say, you know, they're just throw anything, let anything fly. I would be a little leery of, of that. So.
Right.
We make these kind of changes, the safeguards, the unintended consequences as the. As Amber said, it's something we want to make sure that we guard against.
That's all I have. We can go around the table. Albert?
Doing options committee, Matt. What's been apparent is that two developers have looked at the. Recycling center, the pit area basically for solar installation, and it's just really not feasible. The depth of the hole, the shadowing and, and the. The profit margin that they would require. It's not really feasible. Obviously, we're still looking at solar on the recycling area, center roof itself over the recycling equipment. But they're, they want to focus on increased solar for, for residents on Shelter Island, kind of push that. Just for the island to become more independent, basically. Lynn Arthur is somebody in Southampton who's been working on initiatives. And they're, they've been talking to her, possibly coming over and giving another presentation just to kind of stimulate people. I know, Dottie, you have electric in your house, people that have good experience with, with solar, the Presbyterian Church. Has had very, I, I, what I hear is very good results from their installation. There's tax credits, tax credits that are available. So they're just looking at trying to push that, push that solar initiative on the island.
I know there was a big push a few years ago, quite a few people.
Yeah.
Hooked up. It'd be nice to get, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, find out how they're doing.
That, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, Amber?
I couldn't find my notes on the West Neck Water meeting on Friday. Do you? Do you have anything on that? Looked everywhere. I needed like a little spark.
No, just that we met, West Neck Water met, we had the board from West Neck Water, Joe Picorni from Suffolk County Water Authority, Joe Fener, the town engineer. And we just reviewed where we are with Suffolk County Water, their upgrades, where, where, you know, everything. Where everything stands, everything's moving along pretty well. No complaints from the customers. Actually, things are going pretty well. The end of October, they'll be giving us their three month evaluation on their projections going forward. That was it really.
Yeah.
It was, it was a productive meeting. It was good. I think everybody's happy so far. And, yeah, that was it.
Yeah, and the, the three month mark is when we'll start to evaluate the, you know, the operating agreement and how to keep going forward. That'll be an important meeting in October. The only other thing is. It's an appropriate thing to mention, sort of a public service announcement is the debates will be conducted by the legal women voters and the Shelter Island Association. On Saturday morning, all of the candidates will zoom in and have, do the debates. And then it will be, you know, put together professionally and it will be start to become available on Monday. Whatever date that is.
So where, where is it available? Channel twenty two?
It's.
Social media?
It'll be, yeah, I guess social media can, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure how they're going to get it out, but social media, I guess on YouTube and then also hopefully Channel twenty one or Channel twenty two, they're working on it. The town website will have it as well. Okay, good, yeah.
Okay.
That's all that I have.
Okay, good. Jim?
Just two short things. Chief Reed and I and Shelter Island Health and Wellness Alliance, forming a small committee. We, we mentioned that the vigil that we had about a month ago or so that focused in on. Some of the drug overdoses that we've had here on Eastern Long Island, particularly here on Shelter Island, it wasn't going to be a one shot deal. And what we're trying to focus in on is obviously education being number one, both school and community. And working with school and curriculum and working with the community, with adults, preventive programs and mental health issues. You know, and, and obviously having Jim there, we would be working also with police departments in terms of, of those kinds of concerns as well. So. It's very premature. We haven't formed a group yet. We're just looking to keep it fairly small initially. Done a lot of work. You know, at night, just putting my thoughts together about it. But I would like it to be aimed at a very positive way in terms of trying to provide. The proper mental health care that's necessary for a community this size. And to work with local officials here on the eastern edge of Long Island to bring mental health care. And treatment further east, so people can get it. Very obvious that it's needed. And, and all our communities, you know, throughout the United States. The second thing was, we had a very short meeting this morning, about forty five minutes to an hour or so with Stella, Joe, Jerry and I. Amber was also in the room and listened to the. Talk about the Heights Treatment Plant and the water recharge efforts and the irrigation of the golf course. And I'll, very brief comment, we're at a crossroads. And the crossroads have developed because of the requirement the Suffolk County Health Department has placed on that project moving forward. Which was necessary. And that's, this is not a shot at the Suffolk County Health Department. They're there to, to make sure that if we do go forward, we'd have to do another study. That study would be designed to look at ground flow models. Within the wells that support both West Neck Water and also the Heights Water as well. So. Had some very interesting discussions this morning. It's very premature to this, you know, to, to, to make any of this public, but. Needless to say, I'll, I'll sum it up in one statement. We, we might be changing our initial three goals of. That we set out to do. The number one goal was to eliminate the pollution from the Shelter Island Sound. The number two thing was to recharge the aquifer. The number three thing was to use that for irrigation purposes at the public golf course. There's, there's a strong possibility that we may pick up some additional goals that may be best interest of the town. We're looking into those and we may drop some of the others, you know, obviously money is a concern. But. Whether we go forward with that secondary study, and I've, I've, I've been in contact with Jennifer, so. We're not going to get involved in this with spending, spending a lot of taxpayer money going forward with another study without some type of. Financial support that could make that happen. That study could cost about sixty five thousand dollars or so. And it could prove that it puts a kavash on, on goals two and three, which would be fine, but do you need to spend sixty five thousand dollars to be told? That those two goals are unrealistic. The other thing is that in the future, what about if we expand West Neck Water or the Heights drill? New wells in close proximity to the wells that we have, would you have to, would you have to go back through it and, and have that looked at again? So. You know, and there was a close to a three and, three and a half million dollar tag to be able to take that effluent from the treatment plant and put it up. You know, to the golf course for recharge purposes or for irrigation purposes. So that money may be well spent in other ways, which I'm not going to announce, but we're looking into those other alternatives. To get a better balance between what benefits the Heights, what benefits the town, and what's a good investment for the environment. As we move forward. So that's kind of where we're at, Jar. And I think it was a good meeting. We got a, we covered a lot of, a lot of good territory. Once again, I think, you know, having Joe here doing these meetings is, his insights are. Are key and pivotal to the thinking of a lot of us. Brings up some, you know, very good salient points that we need to think about. I like the guy because he thinks a lot outside the box and I think that's a, you know, a very worthwhile thing, so.
Good. Thanks, Jim. Now, next week, we have our budget meeting. Amber and I are just about ready to present it. We're just, well, actually, it is fine tuned. We just have to. Make our notes of everything that we're going to present. There's a lot of additions to the budget, but the numbers came in pretty good. So we're excited about that. We're also looking at some major. Possible grants that we're looking at. We're in constant contact with Jen and Joe because we have till November twenty second to. Apply for a number of grants. And we're looking at significant money grants, not just, you know, or we looked at the last. Community block grant, we usually get between thirteen and fifteen thousand dollars a year. And they said, you know, why don't you put in for a real grant?
Yeah.
So that's what we're doing. We're looking at some significant, and then again, not just looking for money and find ways to spend it. Looking for projects that, you know, we've been talking about for years and, right, let's see if we can, you know, find the real funding to do it. So that's where we are.
Yeah, one last thing I should suggest too, that the Garth Griffin dedication of the FIT Center has been changed. It was based on family needs and getting family here is also on his best friends that will. Basically, on the annual golf outing that goes down south to Myrtle Beach and around that they were, it just didn't coincide. So. We moved it from October sixteenth, which is a Saturday, to November sixth, which is a Saturday. It will start at three o'clock, be over at four o'clock. It's going to be held in the youth center, whether it's outside or in, really is weather dependent. And we're excited about, you know, that and. And the other thing is, I see Susan has walked in, so, you know.
Susan, we did, but come on up and join us.
Come on down.
We, we spoke about the, the volunteer recognition party that we're having. We, we spoke about the, the volunteer recognition party that we're having.
Thank you barbecue.
We spoke that it's open to the entire island.
It is.
We like everybody to come, feel free to expand on whatever you'd like.
Yes, we're very excited about it. Jimmy Coligan, Jimmy Reed, Brett Sarares, Darren and myself have been the committee, put everything together. We have food donated from a lot of the island restaurants, burgers, hot dogs, beer, wine, music. A duo, a violin and guitar duo will start, and then the realm will come in after some short announcements or short speeches. And the weather looks good, so we're excited. We'd love for you to come and help.
You need help, you know.
We have a lot of help, but I would, will always take more. I'm sure people will need a break. A lot of people have put on four-hour shifts, so, um, yes, come. Even if you help for 15 minutes, it would be great.
Okay, we'll, we'll do better, we can do better than that.
Yeah. Good. Who is that gray-haired lady on there? That's me, wow. That's weird.
Thank you, Susan, looking forward to it, thank you.
And by the way, uh, this could not have happened without both Susan and Darren. I mean, they mentioned the other committee members, but you guys, amazing.
Microphone, microphone. Otherwise I can't hear them. They were supposed to be the Lions Club 2020 Citizens of the Year. And this winter, as vaccines are rolling out, I said to Marilyn, it's gonna be so exciting, we can celebrate you and Ken. And she said, oh, no, 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 it's gotta be an island-wide volunteer thank you. So really, the idea came from her, and I was like, okay, great, let's do that.
Make sure we mention that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, now the other half of the dynamic duo is here. Mr. Binder, I, I believe that we have something on the agenda for Friday.
Yeah, it's a ten Lord's Lane, it's a property in West Morland.
Not West Morland.
Closer to Mike. Closer to Mike.
Uh, it is subject to a conservation easement, but that easement allows construction for agricultural purposes.
Christine, is there any chance you can share this? You have anything on it?
Darren's looking to basically to build a barn there. We referred it to the planning board because the deed says that it needs to be approved by the town in order for the, that it's, that it is a valid agricultural use. The planning board basically returned it, so it's a matter for the town board. So it's, uh, ask Darren to come here to explain it so that if, unless anybody has an objection, we can proceed on Friday. It's not, it's not a permit, it doesn't need a public hearing or anything, it just needs approval by the town board by resolution.
Is that it, right there? Darren, is that it?
Uh, so, uh, yeah, this is the garden area.
Yep.
Here, which we will expand a little more when we're done. And the barn is gonna be, we had it, the town has a site plan on record, but the barn is gonna be back in this area right here.
So what, so what is, I'm not really sure.
Do we have an application?
Yeah, we do.
That I just missed.
I don't, do we have the application?
So here's where we're at.
Yeah.
I made an application to the health department, which is normal.
Right.
You always go to the health department.
For what? For, for your building?
For the house.
Right.
And the building.
Right.
For some reason, the health department came back, I don't even go right here.
For some reason, the health department came back with some very obscure questions saying, are you allowed to do this to my architect? And also, he also asked, the health department asked if we could get a letter from the town stating that we didn't need a wetlands permit, which was a very bizarre question that I think coming from the health department as well.
How close are you to the wetlands?
We're 108 feet, I think, it's clearly marked, and we planned and designed the whole property. So we didn't have to do that, so I, I don't understand why the health department is all of a sudden.
Okay, so why are you before the town for, what, what are the covenants? I'm not really, I mean, we're good friends, but I kind of blow.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. No, the covenants just say that we can build a building that supports the use. It also says you can have utilities that go across the open space, you can have driveways that go across the open space, you can have septic lines that go across the open space, your well line could go across the open space. It was very clear, I mean, it's vague, I, I give you, it's vague, but it's.
When you bought the land, is it a separate lot?
There's a line, it's delineated.
And is it?
Yeah, it's all, so it's all one lot, but there's three areas to the lot. There's our residential building area, there's the open space that we can farm and where we can put the barn, and then there's wooded lands that we still pay tax on, but we can put trails through it if we want, we can cut dead trees if we want in there, but it's very clear there's three different pieces of this property.
So you just described it, Darren, going west to east towards the road?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So it comes right up behind, where Albert and I are neighbors on his whole backyard.
Is everything in there like that?
No.
Also like that?
Um, well, I can't, we own another lot in there, and that one has nothing like that. The neighbors don't have, but it's possible that Amy's property at the end has some open space attached to hers where her garden is, I think.
So why, are you looking for a special permit or what?
The, the three things here is there, there's no permit that's required. What, what they're, what they're do, what we're doing here is there needs to be a town board resolution essentially saying that the, the use that he's looking to put this into is either, is or is not compliant with the deed restriction. It's really just a matter of writing a letter to the.
So we're looking, so you're looking to put a barn there? And we're looking for you to tell us that you're not gonna make it an apartment?
Right.
Actually, was it apartments in initially, took them out?
Yeah, took them out because we're not, we're not interested in confrontation. Want the barn, it's got a bathroom in it. Well, it is.
I mean, legally, is there any?
No, there's, there's no, again, all, all this is really about is the town authorized letter to the, to the health department stating that this is, you know, within the, you know, permitted, permitted uses for that property.
And, and who, who threw it back to us, the planning board or the zoning board?
Planning board.
Okay.
This originally came out, obviously came out of the planning board, that these three categories were stipulated in, when was that? How long ago was it?
Can't tell you exactly, 2001.
Is that when the subdivision was made?
That was when the subdivision was done. I was on the planning board at the time. Mr. Barnett, myself, Frank Silvani, Ron Seer.
Came back to bite you.
Who would ever, who would ever think? But, you know, and it was, it was, because we were doing other preservation areas at the time, and there were other, this was, these ideas were coming from the Conic Land Trust. We were, we were getting guided, how I remember, it was a long time ago, but we were getting guided by them. There's definitely other lots on Shelter Island that have the same open space, pretty sure the horse barn, um, that's owned by whomever on Smith Street. On their open space, there's covenants also there that says you can build buildings to support the use.
Right.
But the, so it's not your typical open space preservation because we still pay tax on it. It's discounted, it's a discounted rate, but we still pay tax on it.
Is this a barn in the?
Barn, barn.
Typical.
It's a, but it's a wooden barn, it's wooden structure. We haven't really picked out, or even discussed siding, but it is a barn. Yep.
So the, the bathroom that you wanna put in there? It's at the opposite end from where the house is gonna be built?
It's.
I'm just thinking the septic system.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, no, it's the, it's the closest corner of the barn to the house so that the septic line can work.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's one, it's all feeding the one septic system, the one large IA system. That's where we're at, but we're, so as you know, we're not even to the town yet.
Yeah.
We're still at the health department, so we're just trying to move along with them, we've already been with them for a while so that we can get past them and then, then we can apply to the building department.
You got all that experience from the A-France, you know, from, I guess, all that last two years of working with the health department and clearing all those hurdles with those, with the building. So you've learned a lot.
I learned, I don't, I learned I don't wanna be there much longer because time, time's money, we wanna get going on the house.
Yeah.
And so this, this question, my question to you, Bob, is when are we, it's Tuesday, if we're gonna do this on Friday, when are we gonna see the resolution and anything like the covenants on the property so to support us approving this resolution?
Exactly, I could, I would, yeah. I'll get them to send you the information and the resolution very shortly. Resolution should be able to say something along the lines of, uh, the town of Shelter Island, hereby finds that the proposed construction is compliant with the covenant restrictions.
Okay, and we'll get to see that, just so, I mean.
Yeah, right.
This is the first time, the first time I'm hearing of it today, so I just wanna.
That's why I, as Darren, I mean, to explain it.
Bob, should I recuse myself since we are technically neighbors of properties? Should I recuse myself?
Does it have any bearing on you when you think this square is gonna like block your view or be a problem? How big is this barn gonna be there?
20,000 square feet. 1200 square feet, it's three base.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to your behavior.
There's no monetary gain to them.
But you know, it's, it's a matter of comfort with, with, with these sort of things.
I ask you the same thing, I'm friends with the guy, you know, it's, you know, it's all real.
Yeah, I think, and in Shelter Island, there's, there's a certain different standard because everybody knows everybody.
Yeah.
So I would say that unless, unless you feel there's a conflict, Albert, I wouldn't worry about it.
In this current climate, I'm just concerned.
Right.
But I don't, I don't see a problem in the legal system.
I'm more concerned for me than you, to be honest with you.
Well, if you both recuse yourselves. Board member, then we can't act on it.
I'm not.
Just a little jab.
Okay, so Bob, you'll have some for us, agree before Friday?
Yep.
Okay, all right, you all know how to get ahold of me if you have any questions. Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Didn't I ask you, did you have anything for us?
Yeah.
Okay, I forgot if I asked or not. Bob, did you have anything else?
No, I just said, I want to bring up quickly with the mooring rules, that there's a section 9010 that the town board reserves the right to enact additional rules and regulations with respect to moorings, et cetera. So I, I think on that alone, you're, you're okay with.
Well, I just wanna do something temporary, let them, you know.
Yeah.
Till we decide. So you don't wanna put something in place, so, you know, let's just let them, you know.
Which section is it?
90-10. Let them do something till we decide what we wanna do officially.
It basically gives the town board the authority to, to make the rules and regulations.
I'll take a look at that just cause.
Okay, any, any questions? Julie, Julia?
I'm fine, Jerry, thank you.
All good, thanks, Jerry.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'll make a motion that we close the meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, thanks, everybody.